We're now calling this meeting in Lebanon County Board of Commissioners to order. Would you join me in a moment of silence, please? Thank you.
Hi.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's a very we're a public for which sustains one nation, their God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Thank you. Just to time for a public comment, public comments this morning. Takers, okay, on to approval of the minutes from our meeting on October 2nd, 2025.
Second.
Second, motion is second, and we'll note for the record, taking action that we met in executive session on October 8th and October 15th. Those were just personnel matters. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, those minutes are approved. Next is Tobias. Please introduce yourself to the record, and then you may proceed with your report.
In Tobias, Act eight treasure. We started with a cash balance of one million, twelve thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-two cents. We received on the fourteenth and fifteenth of one million, eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and eleven cents, which brought our total cash to two million, nine hundred and six thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. Less expenditures, which included payroll, two million, forty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-one cents, less tax claim of five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty cents, which brought our cash balance to eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-two cents.
Also, who has presented?
Second.
Motion is second, and questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Anything else?
Yep.
How are things going?
They're going well, thank you.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Alvin, will you introduce yourself for the record and may proceed?
Good morning, Michelle Snably, Director of Community Resources, under Personnel, Transactions, Resignations and Terminations. Linda Core, Office Support One Assessment Retirement Effective December 13th, with her last working day being December 12th. Serena Ditzler, Full-Time Telecommunicator, Department of Emergency Services, resignation effective October 30th. Sajri Al Valets Berrios, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, change from resignation to termination, no call, no show, effective September 28th. Ashley Jones, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, resignation effective October 4th. Patricia Vincent, Probation Aid at Probation Services, termination effective October 8th. Ashley Ziegler, Full-Time LPI at Renova, resignation effective October 27th.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignations and terminations with special thanks to Linda Core, who was in there at assessment since 1989. And Serena Ditzler, 2016, so she had about nine years out of service as well.
Does that conclude your motion?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments? Again, thank these two ladies of the surveyors for their years of service. And all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Under other transactions, children and youth would like to hire the following two caseworker ones, both at the rate of one thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents by weekly, both effective October 20th, and that is Amanda Chavez and Daniel Over. Children and youth would like to hire Christina Draven as a caseworker one at the rate of one thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents by weekly, effective October 27th. President Judge Tilwok would like to hire James Sherlock as a court officer in the courts at the rate of thirteen dollars and thirty-one cents per hour, effective October 20th. Information Technology Services would like to hire Frances Boom as a network technician at the rate of two thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents by weekly, effective November 3rd. The Sheriff's Office would like to hire the following two full-time deputy sheriffs, both at the rate of nineteen dollars and ninety-four cents per hour, both effective October 27th, and that is Kevin Snably and Nathan Friend.
Okay, we approve those transactions.
Second.
Motion is second, questions, comments? And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, transactions are approved.
Moving on to Salary Board, motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Benjamin Spitler, Salary Increase ID Program Specialist One at NHIDEI to the rate of one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and three cents by weekly, retroactive to September 22nd.
Aye. Second.
Motion is second, questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. And long. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. If you would, please introduce yourselves to the record, and then you may proceed.
Yep. Colby Schweitzer, Assistant Director Fiscal.
Stephanie Hammersky, Assistant Director Customer Service and Domestic Relations. All right, we are here regarding numerous contracts based on our 4D cooperative agreement. These come up for renewal every five years when our cooperative agreement is redone with the state. The first pack are for the three support hearing officers. These are exactly what we've had before, there are no changes from these three.
I'll make a motion to approve the three hearing officers, I believe you were asking for.
Yes.
Ellen Wargo, Kristen Lee, and Rosenman Presby.
Yes.
Second motion. Motion is second, any questions or comments regarding the question? If not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
The second set of contracts are for the reporting services, the stenographers for our hearings, which are held every Thursday. This is also the same as previous contracts.
Those two, these two are agreeing. So we need to.
Yeah, this is the same.
Why question?
Second.
Motion is second, questions or comments? All in favor of those, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, they are approved.
The next contract is for our Title 4D Staff Attorney, John Gregson. This is also the same as a prior contract, however, this would only be through December 31st of this year because we are hoping to hire him on as a full-time employee of this park.
Hey, I'll make a motion to approve the staff attorney agreement with John Gregson.
Second motion. Motion is second, any questions or comments? All in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Right, the final contract is new this year. It is with the Sheriff's Department to do services and sit in on hearings and transports because we no longer have deputy sheriffs on our staff, so we contracted out to them to provide these services.
I'll move to you, we're going to move a minute with Sheriff's Department.
Second.
Motion is second, any questions or comments? And all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. That agreement is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hey, Holly, you're ready. Get it. Please introduce yourself to the record, and then you may proceed.
Good morning, Holly Leahy, Administrator for Lebanon County Mental Health, Intellectual Disabilities, Early Intervention Programs. I'm here this morning for two contract-related pieces. The first is for our contract amendments for fiscal year 2024, 2025. There's just one, and that is to increase units to cover a billing that wasn't paid due to our waiver issue. The total is one thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars for the ID program, and that will be covered with our allocations for fiscal year 2024, 2025. So we are not seeking any additional funds from the county for this expenditure.
Make a motion to approve the one thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars requested for contract amendments.
Second. Motion is second, any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Yep. And then for fiscal year 2025, 2026, we have four in total. There are two for intellectual disabilities and two for early intervention. Although, sir, primarily to cover authorized units. Then we also have an emergency respite that was needed for someone who was enrolled in the waiver program, but they didn't go retroactive. The total is fifty-one thousand, seventy-nine dollars, and again, that will be covered through our allocations. Once the budget is announced from state, we anticipate that those will be covered once this passed.
I'll move to approve the 25, 26 contract amendments as presented.
Second.
Motion is second, questions or comments? And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Thank you so much, I just want to express my appreciation for all your support that you do.
I'd like to take this opportunity, just in the last couple of weeks, some concerns about services came to my attention, knew Holly would be able to help with those, but the way she handled them very professionally, but very compassionately. I want to applaud you for the way you conduct yourself and take care of people in the community, thank you.
Thank you so much, it's my pleasure, thank you.
You are ahead of schedule. Dan Lyons is not here, but Christine is, if you'd like to.
I'm talking among yourselves for a little while, yeah.
Mr. Christine, you've heard her again.
Christine.
I'm looking at hands. Only do to give my own.
Be impressed if she could pull that off.
Good morning, Christine Hartman, I am the Administrator at Lebanon County Community Action Partnership. I'm here for three things this morning. Number one is approval for our 24, 25 final grantee cost report for our medical assistance transportation program. The total spent was one million, four hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We provided forty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-five trips. This one year.
Make a motion to approve the medical assistance transportation allocation.
Second. Motion is second, are any questions or comments? And all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Approved.
Thank you. Our second order of business is my 25, 26 allocation for our medical assistance transportation program. Our proposed budget is one million, five hundred and sixty-four thousand, twenty-five dollars, and that will cover the 25, 26.
And motion.
Just to remind, this is an entitlement program, so the request each year is funded, and if there's additional needed, it's also funded.
Correct.
It's one of the few things I know of anymore where it's, a need is met, no matter what.
Right, yes, we do a projected budget, that's what they give us, you know, how they get the number. If we overspend, they reimburse us, if we underspend, we pay it back.
Good answer, very good presentation.
Second.
Motion is second, questions or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, and we have that approved.
Last order of business, I don't have it in front of me, but I took on a new driver that needs approval. Yes, Gary Garson will be one of our new subcontracted drivers for us. So I did a new contract and sent it over for our additional driver.
Make a motion to approve Gary Garson as a driver for medical systems transportation.
Second. Motion is second, questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, and should be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
You want me to try to wave hands, sir?
No.
Okay.
Thank you for the output.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, break.
And if you would, please introduce yourselves, and then you may proceed.
Thank you.
My name is Sydney Richardson with the Re-Devil Authority.
Dan Lyons, Re-Development Authority. We have the annual business for the Community Development Block Grant Program. We went through our annual pre-application cycle, which starts with an invitation to eligible Lebanon County municipalities and public service agencies to submit funding requests to the Re-Development Authority for the county's community development funding. We held a public hearing for public input on that process. We evaluated the funding requests that were received and made recommendations for funding, and then we advertised that budget in the newspaper. On the second public hearing, there was no public input, and today we're asking permission to, for approval of that application and budget. And then there's also a required fair housing resolution that is part of that annual cycle as well.
You want to take this, one by one, or is that?
So the first would be the fair housing resolution?
I'll move to approve the, that resolution.
Hello, second.
Motion is second, any questions or comments? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Approved.
Thank you, the second resolution is approving the application submission to the State Department of Community and Economic Development and authorizing the chairman to sign all the pages that go into that application.
Second.
Second. Motion is second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Have that approved.
Thank you, and then the final resolution is related, it is modifying earlier fiscal year budgets in the CDBG program to reallocate unused money, leftover money from other projects to projects with more immediate need, immediate expenditure timelines.
Do you mind walking through some of these?
No, no.
Some of them have some age to them, they just want to maybe update on what they are, especially in South Lebanon.
So for the budget modification, the earliest fiscal year is 2019, that's actually we're outside the contract expenditure deadline for that, that was, this came about through monitoring by the state. They clawed back some administrative dollars, which required us to basically move money from another activity to compensate for that. So what we're doing is removing the oldest money, that, a piece in 2019, and then two pieces in the 2021 budgets to the 2023 Myers Town Project, which was just under construction this year, and is awaiting payment. So we will be using all the oldest money to pay that invoice, it's, you know, ready to be paid now. And then in South Lebanon, they're just moving money between two programs. So they, they had a owner occupied housing rehab program, they assisted one beneficiary through that program earlier this year. With the little balance that they have left, they can't do a whole other project, so they're just moving that into their acquisition rehab resale program, which will be spent on that property on Fifth Avenue, and we're rehabilitating for them. And then.
Is that, is that between Wallop and.
Yes, 138 South of them. And then the final move is in the fiscal year 2022 budget, during that, that application cycle, we approved an activity in Jonestown for improvements to their square. They had requested an extension, a delay in implementing that, and then eventually decided to withdraw their request. So they, they backed out of that project, they didn't have the money they needed to do the other pieces, is my understanding. And we're proposing reallocating that money to an eligible activity in Anvil.
And they're ready to go?
Yes.
Okay.
To approve this modification of these budgets as presented?
Second.
Motion is second, are there any questions or comments? Not all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Thank you very much.
You have any else?
That's all.
All right, thank you.
Very efficient.
Bill, you're next. If you'd please have feet, introduce yourself for the record, and then you may proceed.
Morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, sir.
I am Bill Lekanroth, and today I'm here as the president of Hilltop Playground. So on behalf of the Playground Association, I want to thank the county for awarding us thirteen thousand, five hundred through the Marcellus Shale Grant. Our original request was twenty-five thousand for a greenway and blacktop improvement project, but with the reduced award, we made careful adjustments while keeping the goals intact. We hired Mike Meager Tree Trimming to remove two overgrown maple trees. The root systems were damaging pavement in the building. His crew also used stump grinders to remove five tree stumps, preparing the site for further improvement work. We then hired Thewer Masonry to construct five brick planters and Roots Nursery in Mannheim. We use them to purchase four maturing trees to populate the brick planters.
What kind of trees?
There's a cherry, two variations of maple, and a black gum.
Will these grow and destroy your parking lot again?
I don't, I don't think so, they're, two of them are ornamental.
Yeah, like, two seem small, two seem large.
Did you see the picture?
I do see the pictures, yeah.
Good.
That's what made me ask.
I think the trees that were there in the past were there for fifty-plus years, so in another fifty years,
Okay.
they may be overgrown.
Wait, look back, listen.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah, if you'd come back at that time.
Yes.
Every stage of the project was completed with negotiated lowest pricing and significant, significant in-kind labor donations. We're proud of what we accomplished with the limited budget, and we want to thank the county and commissioners for continued support of Hilltop Playground.
Thank you for, for all the time and effort you put into that playground, and you're not alone, you have a good team behind you, but I've been to
We do.
many events over the recent years of National Night Out and other things, so you do a great job, the place looks great.
Thank you.
I have to say, it's a good investment. Bill Mamley, Tom Comer.
Thank you.
That's, that's, I said, all your good work out there. If you have an opportunity to use mentors from Lebanon County all the time, to the best that you can, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any else, thanks.
That's good. You got to give it some time, like.
Oh, yeah.
Do that. It's still running.
He has, he's he has the contractor hazmat, and Bob Dowd may be coming over for that. He has a little more time, I could walk through mine if it's like.
That's fine.
Do you want me to sing it slowly?
I don't, I never heard you sing these so well.
You don't need to.
All right.
What I have is the disabled veteran exemptions from real estate, having met the program requirements. They are Harry Carpenter of Lawn Road, Polira. Matthew Bocell of Sandal Wood Drive, Polira. Kevin Gendel of Camp Meeting Road, Jonestown, and Nicholas Heimbach of Jonestown Road, Anvil.
Make a motion to approve the disabled veterans for 100% real estate tax exemption.
Second motion.
Second, any questions, sir? And all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, they are approved.
Okay, the next item I have is a letter of support for Anvil's, Anvil Cleona School District's proposal to to secure funding for a pedestrian safety improvement project. And as they note in the letter, they are submitting application for the, to the U.S. Department of Transportation for nine hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars in transportation alternative set aside funding. They would like to make some improvements to the roadside of 934, the area of the Anvil Cleona Secondary School, there are, there's always increased traffic, anyone that has gone through there at the, at school opening or closing time is well aware, and they want to install crosswalks and flashers at Regert's Lane to ensure student safety across 934, reach campus from adjacent neighborhoods. Once on campus, they will also install ADA sidewalks to fill in gaps in the walkway that lead to the main building. And then their applications due October 31st, so they asked for your letter of support to attach with the application.
I'm sorry, we provide such a letter as requested.
Second.
Motion is second, any questions or comments? And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Approved.
Then the last item I have is a reimbursement for the America 250 PA reimbursement commission. This is for the purchase of t-shirts that I believe they are, have offered for sale, have already offered for sale. This is an expenditure that was from last month. This is for one thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents to record illustrated shirts in Anvil.
I'll make a motion to approve the t-shirt, Bill.
Second.
Motion is second, questions or comments? And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Have that approved.
Did I somehow get a wrong thing? Is, is there something, oh wait, maybe that's, okay, I think I see it, I'm sorry, I thought I had an extra paper.
Mr. Blue.
Good morning.
Could you introduce yourselves to the record and proceed?
Yes, good morning, Matt Beugle, Lebanon County Solicitor.
And Bob Dowd, Department of Emergency Services Director.
I have one item for consideration by the board this morning. This is the hazardous material response team agreement that Lebanon County is looking to enter into with Lancaster County, as the board are aware. About six weeks ago, we had a public workshop meeting pertaining to the possibility of entering into an agreement with Lancaster County. As the board is aware, back in around June, Lancaster County's long-term hazmat service provider informed them that they would no longer be providing services. As a result of that, through a mutual aid agreement, Lebanon County has been providing those hazmat services as required under state law. And after the initial workshop meeting, the board had directed me to reach out and initiate communication with the Lancaster County Solicitor. I've had a number of good conversations with her, I met with her at their DES Center in Mannheim back at the beginning of September. And through our work and through drafting work of our respective directors, we have come up with an agreement that we have here, and I'll just give a, just a summation of some of the main elements of this agreement. The initial agreement, it was, we're looking to do it for one year, and it would, it would run with the state calendar, so from July 1st to June 30th. So the initial term will be whenever, if, assuming Lebanon County approves it, and then Lancaster County approves it, that, that'll become the effective date, and it will run until June 30th, and then after that, there will be three automatic one-year renewal, where it's renewed every year on, on July 1st for, for that year. Importantly too, there is a provision including that any party can terminate the agreement with 30 days' notice. I know that was something that was discussed at the workshop.
Without cost.
Without cost, yeah. The other, the other element too, that I made sure was included in the agreement, is that if Lebanon County, if the Lebanon County team is responding to an incident in Lebanon County, Lancaster County is requesting our assistance, and we are not able to assist with them, that we are not held responsible in any way. And it was indicated to me by the Lancaster County Solicitor that they have existing agreements with, with York County to the west and with Chester County to the east. So they have, they have a good working relationship with both of those counties, so that would take some of the onus off. So that would take some of the onus off of Lebanon County if, if our team is preoccupied responding to a, a major event on 78 or 81.
Yeah, the, the process there would be, we would say, hey, we can't make it. We're going to send one of those other teams to cover us at Lancaster County.
So we would decide who gets sent, not them?
We would tell them to dispatch the next closest team. So decisions based on.
This doesn't reduce the size of our coverage area.
No.
It's still the whole county.
Yes.
There is also too, each year there is a $20,000 payment that is submitted from Lancaster County to Lebanon County. The payments are made on a bimonthly fashion, so beginning in, in June, it's June, August, October, and it continues every other month. That, the other thing too, I want to point out for the board, is that when the hazmat team responds to an incident, under the, the state hazmat law, there is a mechanism for the county to submit an invoice to the responsible party. And, and so under the terms of this agreement, Lebanon County will be the responsible party to submit a payment to the, the individual or the entity that caused the hazmat spill. After 150 days, if the invoice is still outstanding, then it will be submitted to Lancaster County for payment. So for Lancaster County to reimburse Lebanon County. And, and so we're, we're going to be working in tandem with, with Lancaster County with regard to recouping some of the costs that are associated with responding to these, to these hazmat incidents.
That's, that's more protection than we have locally, that's, that's protecting our, our financial interests.
I had two things. Show your line. Number one, we did meet with Pennsylvania County Risk Pool, our carrier for liability and general property liability insurance, and those have been satisfied. We met with Keith Wentz over at, over at the office.
How much?
How much what?
Extra money for the risk pool or to pay for insurance?
I don't think there's, is an added premium, not that I'm aware of, there's an added premium.
He may know of an occasion of any change to our policy.
No. No, they just wanted to make sure the language was sufficient so that the liability belonged in the right, or, you know, went to the right place under certain circumstances. So we were able to satisfy that. And do you know the number of calls? I didn't ask you to have this, but we talked a little about it yesterday.
To date, I don't. It's, it's less than 15.
Okay, since, since April? When did we start to?
July.
Okay. Okay, so the, so they're averaging four a month, something like that.
What was the furthest call? How long of a distance?
Corregill. Corregill.
Okay, I know. Yeah, I know Corregill.
I don't know what the response time was on that, but it was probably about an hour.
Was it on the roadway or was it on the water?
Don't know the details of it. I'll find out.
It's, it's been working very well on a mutual aid agreement. Have not seen anything other than, than positive come from it on both sides, but Lebanon and Lancaster County.
If, do you mean a water, what type of water event?
The Sescua Hada.
Well, if only it would be a hazmat event, if it was a rescue, then they'd have their own resources.
Yes, we're not doing rescue services.
You're not doing rescue.
Just hazmat.
No, it's not a hazmat function.
It does not mean that we would not be called to assist, but that's part of any of our neighbors. And it's not part of the agreement.
Well, I appreciate the, and I love the relationship building, your continuation of the relationship. And I, I feel that we have two of the best protectors of our interests in front of us, so I appreciate that. And I would, we adapt this agreement.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion is second. Questions, comments? I'll make a comment again. I want to applaud Mr. Dowd. I know you have plenty on your plate right now. You don't have to do this, but in this entire field where, you know, ambulance, transports, fire, police, you know, you're seeing more efforts to regionalize, which makes a lot of sense. The equipment is very expensive, manpower is very difficult to, to maintain. So if we can work out agreements like this that work well and do, do not sacrifice our response time and ability to, to respond, I applaud you for, for taking this on.
I appreciate that. I think this is a good step towards sustainability for us and Lancaster.
Any other questions, comments? You're not all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
As much as this has come along, I still have to vote no. I'm looking out for the safety of Lebanon County. I think we need to be available full force if there's a train wreck, a spill. And if you're down in Corregill to get back here and if there's an event going on at Mount Hope, our citizens are coming in second, and that's not what we have hazmat for, so.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
As we've talked about for every meeting, Lebanon County is our priority, Board of Mean, our priority. And we will never send all of our resources to Lancaster County. There will always be a response capability in Lebanon County.
Thank you. And unless you was made with the safety of Lebanon County and zoom, I guess.
I guess if I would regret that, if you don't know me. If we didn't need them, why do we have a second one? It, it just doesn't make sense to me, if we can do without them. You know, I, I, it, it, you, you came a long way. I don't want to put you down in any way. I just disagree with the concept in that I think our Lebanon County residents have to come first. If we have the, the truck that is being used in Lancaster County and it's for Lebanon County, it should be here. I don't think it should be dispatched to other places. That's just how I feel.
She seconded the motion. You did. Adrian, I'm on record in supporting this, so we have a two to one. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate your work on this.
Thank you.
Just have one more item, but thanks. Been ahead of schedule, so I don't think Eve is here yet. I'll just take a, talk a little recess or break, or however you would like to do it. Just wait, see if they're coming. No, no, not at all.
I did, I was at Auburn, yeah. Couple of weeks ago. Actually, I just printed them again yesterday, so you can have them.
Just trying to see when I can schedule a little.
I steered away from. It's really not a bad schedule, I don't think.
All right, I'm a little ahead of schedule, so please, whether you have a seat. All right, you, you introduce yourself for the record and then you may proceed.
I'm Eve Bemis-Durker with the Lebanon Valley Economic Development Corporation. And we administer the Next Generation Farmer Loan Program with, along with Jackson Township IDA. We have two loans for approval this morning for submission to the state. The first one you have heard of twice already. It is, I'm back before you again because it needs to be very specific on the exact ownership of the property. As we put it through before, it was more general, so it covered all the bases, but as we have to get through, it needs to be very specific. So the loan, as it's being requested, is now under Ryan Herr and RKH Holding LLC.
Is that the change?
That is the change, yes.
Stay the same.
Yes.
Second.
Motion, and a second, any questions or comments?
Just again, to reiterate the amount and where the form is, what, what type of form, we've talked about this before, I'm sorry.
Is it the Sycamore Spring Orchard property? And as it's being reviewed with the state, we had to go through, and it's an 82 and a half acre property. The Next Generation Funds cannot be used for the market or any horses or species like that, that could be for pleasure. So that part's been taken out. That is being paid by, for citizens, bank their portion of the loan. That's been specified as we've gone forward with the state. The requested funding is 649,000 under the Next Generation Program, which will be for the property itself, which will be for crops, pumpkins, flowers, beef cattle, hay, and a portion of it is wooded as well.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, and all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
On the same side, that approval.
And then the second loan that we have to, to review with you this morning is for Andrew and Charlene Newswanger. They have not owned any agricultural property themselves yet. Charlene was raised on a poultry farm. And so now they're, they're looking to purchase a property in Fredericksburg. It's 30.5 acres and a portion of it is wooded and about 13 acres of it is cropland. And they are anticipating constructing three, three for oil and poultry houses in the future. However, that's not part of the original loan that we are requesting. That will be at later date, but they look forward with that portion of the project. There is a house and a garage on the property and that's being excluded from the Next Generation Funds. And that'll be covered by their own funds that they're putting into the property. So we are asking, I believe it's for 634,000.
400,000.
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution for the Next Generation Farm Loan Program in Jackson, with the Jackson Township Industrial Authority on Werner Road in Fredericksburg.
The property's on Werner.
Excuse me?
The farm is on Werner Road.
Werner Road, yes.
The industrial.
A second motion and second. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. On the same side, have that approved. Anything else?
That's all?
Thank you very much.
See you back again soon.
All right.
The farming going here in Lebanon County. Thanks enough.
Okay, I think that concludes our formal items on the agenda. If any other, I just want to go to the order.
Move to again.
Second.
To convene the, the election board of Lebanon County, as the centers to. Mornings. You know, into our meeting, if you'd like to introduce yourselves, then we can let Jamie and Matt go back, but we can go through introductions to be careful.
Sean Drasher, Director of Elections.
Joyce Scarborough, Deputy Director of Elections. Jamie Schumaker, Office.
Okay. You wait, we'll see the minute, order, any, pre-ordered.
All right, just as a general update on where we stand.
I guess, I'm sorry, I did forget public comment.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Pam Fercamo, Lebanon City. As a longtime member of the League of Women Voters, now defunct in Lebanon County, we had always strived to try to get as many people as possible to vote and to count as many votes as possible. Recently, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court passed a ruling that allows voter registration offices to enter into their shore system, a note that says that a ballot might have come in without a signature or without a date. If that information was entered into the shore system, say I sent my ballot in two weeks early and that information was entered into the shore system, I would have two weeks to get in to, to fix that ballot, to make my vote count, or that I would know that I could file a provisional ballot at my election place. But I understand that in Lebanon County, we are not going to put that indication into the shore system. And it's not a criticism or anything. I'm just asking why.
Well, we, we are already using those codes and we're going to continue to use those codes. We start, start with the precam布saying with the legally defined window and as soon as we find those ballots that we're processing, then we do use the shore system codes to scan them in. I actually probably call people even before we, they get the email.
Okay, but it's my understanding that in the previous election, those codes saying that there was no signature or no date were only entered two weeks after the election, which really doesn't allow a person the time to vote a provisional ballot.
Sharon, can I?
Sure.
So in, in light of the, the Supreme Court decision, we've actually been compliant with the court from when the Commonwealth Court rendered their decision last year against this matter, involving a case that arose out of Washington County. In response to the Commonwealth Court decision, before the presidential election last year, we implemented a policy where if, if a vote is set aside, a ballot is set aside for missing a date, missing a signature, then the voter receives notification either from me directly or from a member of our election office. They do so, that is done on election day, and there's more of a personal touch with that communication than just getting an automated email. It's, I, I personally, in, in November of last year, called about 200 voters and informed them that their ballot had been set aside and that they have the right to, to cast a provisional ballot and that ballot will be counted. So that was, that was the, the court, the Supreme Court recently affirmed, the Commonwealth Court, in saying that a voter has a due process right to, when, when their ballot is set aside and they have the right to cast a provisional ballot and have that ballot counted. So in those two respects, we are compliant and that, we are notifying voters. With respect to the, the codes, however, that's something, after the decision was made, Sean and I, we had the calculation, mostly Sean through with the Department of State, to ensure that what we're doing is compliant. And nowhere in the court case does it mandate that all 67 counties have to use the code system. And what it comes down to is counties that segregate the ballots as soon as the ballot comes in. We don't do that here in Lebanon County and a number of other counties do not do that. So we are precam布saying beginning at 7:00 AM and that's what we are, are determining whether the outer envelope has, has an error. The other thing I just want to mention too is regarding the date. There was a federal case, it was a federal district court case, and it was actually just reaffirmed by the Third Circuit Court Appeals, which is one level under the U.S. Supreme Court, that said that if a ballot is missing a date or has an incorrect date, it still has to be counted. So that court ruling from the federal court, that that takes the number down even more. So for those people, they won't get a notification because if they're missing a date because we're going to count it anyway, so.
But if somebody gets a phone call on election day telling them that they can vote provisionally. If they're out of town, they don't have the opportunity. If their ballot came in two weeks earlier and it was missing a signature and they were notified at that time. They would have time to make arrangements to be able to cast the provisional ballot, to make sure they're available that day. And it's my understanding that it's not considered precanvassing to check that and mark the shore system ahead of election day.
Not particularly, I mean, when we look at it, it does seem to be precanvassing, so.
But that's not what the court ruling said.
Well, what the county was doing was they were they were precanvassing before the election day, and they were segregating the ballots. And then not only were they not contacting voters, they were also not accepting the provisional ballots in addition to of the people who had cast the mail-in ballot, and then it had not been accepted. So they were like doing a double whammy. And we've been pretty consistent with what Department of State guidelines have. And we just screened it again just to make sure that we were still being in compliance.
And the confirmation from from the Deputy Secretary of Elections, Jonathan Marks, indicated that we go above and beyond by sent by making a phone call and an email address. Because under the code system that's referred that Mr. Carbo references. It's an automated email that often maybe will go into a same folder. And oftentimes too, you might have a lot of older voters that don't have an email address. Policy that we have here in Lebanon County is they get a phone call in addition to the email. And like I said, I personally talked to many voters on election day in May during the primary. And they were very appreciative of that, and they said, I'm going to go and cast a provisional ballot right now. And then when we convene three days later, that provisional is counted.
Okay, thank you for your own end up to response to that request. Oh, yeah, thing before we get into the meat of this would be the approval of minutes of our last meeting.
Motion to approve those minutes as presented.
Second.
It's been moved to a second. If any additions, additions or the wires comments, or if you need to hit by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so. Now we can have the update.
Okay. We started started our logic accuracy testing two weeks ago, and it went very, very smoothly. We finished about half a day earlier than usual. Not because we were rushing anything, but because with help of Phil over in the warehouse, he had things very well organized. And they were able to fly through some stuff and not waste time setting up. So that all went very well. All the equipment tested tested through. We are currently wrapping up the logic actually testing of our poll pads just down the hall here. That's a two-stage process. So the first stage just wrapped up. The second stage will be the week before the election. We have to wait until the most current data files available before we can do that. So all that is going well. We had, I wanted to get you these numbers a little bit earlier, but we have breaking numbers that are just coming in. So I thought you'd find them of interest because they're so fresh. We are at currently ninety-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-four, just shy of ninety-three thousand registered voters. That's a high point since I started, but I my first election was eighty-eight thousand. And that breaks out to Democrat and Republican, twenty-four, nine, sixty-eight. And five, two, six, four, six. Again, I apologize for not having these before the meeting. We wanted to get you something as current as possible.
What year was the eighty-eight thousand?
It was twenty twenty. I ran that number in twenty twenty-one, so.
So it's about a thousand per year we're gaining now.
And that is again, a net where we're taking a lot of voters off the books, but we're just adding them even faster.
They die or something.
And then we have some interesting mail-in. We just, Joy just finished going through the mail-in numbers right before we literally, before we walked in. If you wanted to share some numbers who we're at.
Yeah, we currently have approximately nineteen hundred and seventy mail-ins. Breakdown is one hundred and fifty that have come into our office. Approximately seventeen hundred that we've received by mail. And approximately one hundred and seventy that have been received at the outside location.
And the numbers, the overall numbers for mail-in ballots have ticked up a little bit more than we expected them to. We're at ninety-four, ninety-four requests so far, nine thousand four hundred and ninety-four.
Any questions from anyone regarding those numbers? Good information, yeah.
And there's the one difference, there's one number jumped out at me when I was looking at all the data this morning. That's a different from the beginning of the year. In the city itself, we're at fourteen thousand eighteen voters. And the difference between the parties has grown a bit. And it's now five, six, three, three Dems. And four, nine, five, six Republicans. So there's now a six hundred and seventy-seven voter difference, and that was just over four hundred six months ago.
To which favor? I'm sorry.
It's moved to the Democrats.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So that's explained. There is a post-elect, post-presidential election, there's always a big drop off for everyone, and it looks like it just slipped more in one direction.
Well, I'm impressed because I don't see any gray hairs anywhere here this side of the table. So congratulations for getting through all this. I know it's always a challenge.
General updates?
Jamie's been working on student.
This is my favorite part.
Yeah, great, great strides with this.
Okay, I have sent packets to every public school in the county and followed up with emails. I have heard from Our Lady of the Cross, two students have reached out and wanted to be involved. And just Tuesday, I received twelve applications from Cedar Crest High School students. I'm still working on assigning them. I've most of them assigned. Lebanon High School, as usual, is involved, and I just spoke to the teacher liaison from Lebanon. And he expects that we'll have two students per ward as usual, so that's thirty students in the city. Plus the two students from Our Lady of the Cross and the twelve from Cedar Crest. So we'll have about forty-four students involved this year, which is just a little lower than we had for the presidential. I know that it's early in the year, so schools are just getting started.
Well, I think it's significant that it's not a presidential cycle, and you still have close to the same numbers. That's very.
Yeah, I'm gonna keep communication open with the schools, and I'm hoping that in the spring I will definitely have more students and more schools involved, I'm hoping. I'd like to, with Sean's permission, maybe get us.
Yeah, I do.
I'd like to maybe get a section on our website with some frequently asked questions or something about the student program. Yeah, but that's where we're at with that.
Yeah, and students don't use a lot of paper forms.
No.
So if we are able to pull in just one more district, Elko, or maybe Palmyra, we'll break ten percent of our poll workers as students again. So in and off here, it's.
Heck, it's very professionally done and very detailed.
Could you put it in perspective, talk about, I believe this is a model program in state.
It is our state liaison leans on us and Jamie a lot. There it's, there are a lot of counties that are trying to do, do what we do. And it's all, the cornerstone is Lebanon High. Like, they've been, they've been rock solid from the beginning, and it's our, the liaison at Lebanon High is phenomenal. So you building off of that, we've got an interest from the other districts as well. I'm very excited.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, are you able to reach out to any homeschool groups and maybe get some of their students involved?
I would love to. That's one of the reasons why I like to get it on the website, so that those students can be involved as well. I have cyber school students, so once they're old enough, I'd love to be able to have them or like other cyber school students involved. That would be fantastic.
Of homeschool organizations. So in Lebanon County, I'll, I'll.
So.
No, go ahead.
An interesting conversation that's come out of this, the work that Jamie's done, is speaking to Department of State Deputy Jonathan Marks and his his new deputy director, it works to him. There's the success that's come out of this has drawn a light onto the fact that the student program does have certain awards they give schools and things. But the awards don't. The awards have inbuilt bias in the parameters where there are a lot of districts that it's simply impossible, even if they're very active participants in this program. They're never going to be able to reach those, all the benchmarks to get the award. So we've been looking at ways to reevaluate the awards at state level based on some of the good work that's been going on, so. I, it's great that we set these benchmarks up here, but there are certain things completely out of our control and outside of the school's control. So we're hoping that we can see Lebanon High recognized at least since they've been participating for so long.
Yeah, Sean has encouraged us to set goals for ourselves in the office. And one of my goals is in the next few years, I would like to see one Lebanon County win the Governor's Award. They can win a gold award for having at least eighty-five percent of their eligible students registered to vote. And a silver award for at least sixty-five percent. So that's one of my goals in the next couple of years. I really want to see at least one Lebanon County school win. And we had talked about the Department of State liaison. She set up a program at, in Lehigh County before she started working for the state. And one of the things that she suggested for student poll workers was that we could write letters of recommendation for college applications or things like that. So I'm open to doing that. That's what's going to get these kids to come out and help us. Absolutely.
Jamie, I'd just like to say thank you. I can tell this has become a passion of yours. And, you know, to have that in Lebanon County, in addition to all the great work our our team is doing. You're doing a phenomenal job, and thank you so much.
Thank you. We've got some exciting things wait coming next year too, so.
Keep us.
Can I ask a couple of questions? One, what happened with the precinct that you were looking at, I think the last meeting? Possibility of changing your precinct? What was the outcome of that?
Precinct North Lebanon East, twenty-seventh.
Sure, could you leave that mic a little closer?
North Lebanon East precinct is going to remain where the Blue Max Bingo Hall was, which is now Oasis Religious Center. And then, beginning in twenty twenty-six, we are going to change to a new polling place.
You're very gracious to extend one more election for us.
To follow up, Jim, after the meeting last time, the individual on behalf of Oasis Christian Fellowship called me back indicated that we can remain there. And so there will be notification for voters this November that beginning in for the April, or May, primary election for twenty twenty-six. They'll be voting at a new location.
I know, Sean, you've looked for campuses in the past. Is that a problem for this election? You have plenty of campuses.
Yeah, we're all set. Yeah, we're running out of tables and chairs, tables and chairs, so we're all set. And with any luck, we're at, you know, close to ten thousand mail-in ballots right now. So with the number of campuses we have, we are projecting to be done by about one o'clock on election day. And then doing the same thing, coming back at the end of the day to count the remaining hundred or two hundred that are left.
We will hold to that. Thank you very much. Great teamwork and great representation from the county. Especially the outreach to the schools that just, you know, produces strong voting records in the future, you know, by getting them in there. You know, at that age, so that's great. Thank you. Anything else? Would be good for this part of our meeting?
Yes, if I could just get back to Mrs. Tricamo's comment and applaud your efforts. All, everyone involved in the League of Women Voters over the years to encourage people to vote and count every vote. We certainly share that sentiment. These people work the tails off to get that done. And I think we're taking reasonable, making reasonable more than reasonable efforts that to help ensure, but you know, I have to say too, that the regulations about mail-in votes aren't that complicated. You know, that requires a signature and a date. And it's hard for me to imagine that we got so many in the last election that we actually had to contact them and remind them with all the publicity and all the court cases and everything else, and we're still getting ballots that don't have a signature or a correct date. And it's just, that baffles me.
Mr. Kuhn, with, now that we're accepting all these categories. This number is going to be tiny, like tiny, like ten, twenty, yeah. Total vote, like that total that may may be affected this election. So hard to know exactly, but it's so small. It will be barely a percentage note.
Question was about Jonestown.
So the press here, they can.
It's a municipal year. We have, we go, we try to keep everything on two ballots. And there are some that can push off on the three. Jonestown will have a third page this time around. And we're going to be sending out the third page tomorrow because they've already received the first two. So they just came, they'll be coming in a separate package. And on election day, it'll be treated. There'll just be the three pages on election day. This will impact about seventy voters. I think we only have, I didn't check this morning, but we only had three back from Jonestown packages back, so we'll just.
About seventy-five, seventy-two the other day.
It was seventy, seventy-two, yeah. And I think we have three back.
Anything else? Take a motion to adjourn.
Seven.
Second.
Thank you, folks. We stand to adjourn.